Good morning. Today is April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. It is ten a.m. and all members of the court are present except for. And Commissioner Kirkendall is here as well. All members of the court are present and this meeting is called to order. Everyone would please rise for the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, we ask you to be with us today as we go about the business of the county. We ask you to help us make the right decisions concerning our citizens. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
I have three approved minutes of the March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two regular and special meetings and the April fifth, two thousand and twenty-two special meeting as presented by Connie Beckton, County Clerk. So moved. That motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, consider approval of request to cancel law register claims for March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, and approval of cash statement as presented by Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer. Good morning, Ms. McWilliams.
Good morning. I'm asking court to release me of liability of one million, ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-seven cents. In our cash report summary, in general checking account, we have twenty million, four hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and three dollars and seventy-eight cents. In tax pool, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and nine cents, for totaling cash funds of twenty million, four hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Similar. That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. McWilliams. Item five, authorization to pay county bills as presented by the county auditor, Angela Gore. Good morning, Ms. Gore.
Good morning. The pre-previous expenditures for March the twenty-third through the twenty-fourth are five hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. Pre-previous expenditures for March the thirtieth through the thirty-first are three hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-two cents. Pre-previous expenditures for April the fourth through the seventh is five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and five dollars and ninety-four cents. The expenditures for Commissioners Court today are three hundred and thirty thousand, ninety-three dollars and sixty-five cents. The expenditures and transfers is one million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and thirty-six cents. Gross payroll for March the twenty-fourth is five hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-four cents, and the transfers for that payroll is eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty cents. Gross payroll for April the seventh is five hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents, and the total transfer for that payroll is six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Let me play the video.
Second. That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Roberts to pay the bills as presented. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Gore. Item six, consider possibly approve amendments and transfers to the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one budget as presented by the county auditor, Angela Gore. Ms. Gore.
The FY two thousand and twenty-one budget amendments are as follows. Create an expense line item in the engine healthcare is G C H C optical Services at five hundred and eighteen dollars and transfer that money from the physician services for five hundred and eighteen dollars. In the general fund, we need to increase the revenue for miscellaneous, seven thousand, eight thirty-two. The expenses in the DA's office, outside services for five thousand, seven forty-five. The travel, one thousand, two seventy-one. Miscellaneous, seven seventy-four. And constable precinct two, retirement payroll accruals for forty-two dollars.
Ms. Gore, can you stop for a minute?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just now seeing this, so you gotta read all this?
Well, I'm gonna try to summarize some of the payroll rules.
If you don't mind, summarize it, and if anybody wants to review it, it'll be in the minutes. They can also contact my office. I'll be glad to email it out to them. We just got this this morning, right?
Correct.
Okay. Is that okay with the court?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Ms. Gore.
Read each individual budget amendment. The transfers also.
Okay.
In the law library, we need to increase the revenue for about seven hundred and fifteen dollars, and the expenses in the books, seven fifty. Roden Bridge two, materials and supplies, twenty-three thousand, five hundred and nine dollars and five cents. Roden Bridge three, materials and supplies, seventy thousand, two thirty-five, fifty-seven. From Roden Bridge contingency of ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-two cents. Black Creek, Cypress Creek Bridge, we need to create any expenditures in Roden Bridge two, grant matched for ninety-one hundred dollars, and come from Roden Bridge contingency of ninety-one hundred. Capital projects, create a revenue in total rebates for thirteen, five fifty-two, and it's coming from transfers from general, thirteen, five fifty-two. And then the other seven pages are budget transfers, and the majority of them are the payroll accruals. Do you have any questions or on any of those pages?
Only, uh, tell you what, if I can figure this out, I might can pull it up on the screen so everybody who's here can see it, and if there's any questions, they can bring it up. Does that sound good to you?
Yes, sir.
I guess I can't do that because it's not been sent to us electronically, right?
Okay, so in the general Roden Bridge, the payroll accrual was two thousand, ninety-four dollars, and all these were covered within their budgets. Roden Bridge one was four thousand, six hundred and one dollars, Roden Bridge two. Salaries and benefits was twenty-nine thousand, five forty-three. Fuel and oil and equipment maintenance and materials and supplies. And equipment expense was also a transfer in Roden Bridge two. Fifty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars in salaries and benefits for Roden Bridge three. We also had to transfer two equipment purchases from some salaries, materials and supplies and equipment expense, Roden Bridge four. The salaries payroll accruals was one nine, one thousand, nine hundred and forty-three, and we had to transfer eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-one to materials and supplies from equipment expense. The capital projects, we're going to the expense side on the HVAC redesign cares act and four hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and six dollars, and it's coming from the HVAC redesign in the same amount.
Ms. Gore?
Mm-hmm.
Could I interrupt you?
Yes, sir.
Before we get too far away from Roden Bridge.
Mm-hmm.
The reason why each, each Roden Bridge precinct was over on salary and benefits was because of the accrual that you, you told my secretary about, and that's the reason behind that is because of what we changed last year on the way we. Is there any way we can avoid having to do this every year by budgeting more, less?
Well, we talked about that, and then it is based on the, the rate that's approved for the next fiscal year, and so that's the rate that it's paid off of, and we don't know that at budget time. I meant to be able to do that because you're, you're.
Because of the rate. Thank you.
We can get pretty close. This is, last year was the first year we did this. This year, it was very, very minimum amounts, but it does have to be approved in court when you're affecting salaries, and so we can get closer to it each year.
Thank you.
So, um, the jury fund, there were some payroll accruals for eleven dollars. And then the next big item is the CPS pauper attorney. We had to transfer two dynamic line item and a hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars, and we were able to cut, cover that within the jury fund.
I just want to point out that we, I think, raised that CPS pauper attorney from, I don't remember what it was, but we increased it to two hundred thousand to cover the expenses, and it still went over a hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars.
That is correct.
I know that Judge Stover and Judge Thomas both talked to the CPS judge last year about curtailing those. There are just so many CPS cases going on that I'm told this is just gonna keep going up.
That's what we're hearing at our schools too, Judge, is that the way the legislature, about three cycles ago, enacted some things for CPS, the ad items and the parents and all that, everybody gets an attorney, so.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, Ms. Gore, go ahead.
In the jury fund, the payroll accruals for the county judge was three thirty, office was three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Main Commissioners Court, our bank service, we need to transfer twenty thousand, two eighteen, autopsy fourteen thousand, three hundred, and that's coming from capital murders trials in the amount of thirty-four thousand, five eighteen. The county clerk's accruals was five hundred and eighty-eight, flood claims, one fifty-seven, technology, four nineteen, and all these departments were able to cover their accruals within their budget. Eighty-eight District Judge, eight forty-one, District clerk, five eighty-one, JP, five fifty, JP two, five sixty-four, JP three, five sixty-four, JP four, nine twenty-eight, JP five, six thirteen, JP six, seven twenty-eight. The county attorneys was three hundred and seventy-eight. District attorneys was three thousand, one thirty-five. Election expense was one hundred and twenty-five. The auditor, four eight, four eighty-one, treasurer, eight eighteen, tax office, eight twenty-five, purchasing, eight fifteen. Human resources, two sixty-one, maintenance, two thousand, two ninety-seven, constable, two eighty-four of precinct one. Precinct two, two forty-two, precinct three, two eighty-four, precinct four, two eighty-four, precinct five, two eighty-four, precinct six, two eighty-four, juvenile detention, eight thousand, six nineteen, health, four thousand, two forty-one. Indigent, one eighty-seven, and then we also needed to transfer two prescriptions, nine thousand, six thirty-six, from the lab x-ray line item in the same amount. Agro live, two eighty-nine, and then the sheriff's office. Thirty-one thousand, seven forty-two in salaries and benefits. Okay, in the sheriff's office, he did have some other transfers. Fuel and oil, ten thousand, one twenty-seven, subscriptions, one sixty-six, wireless data, two dollars, and he was able to cover that within his budget. And then he also transferred from the jail, uh, to the jail, nineteen thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars from the sheriff's budget. To co, to cover overtime and other items that was over in his jail budget. His jail accruals was nineteen thousand, one twenty-two, and that included overtime as well. His prisoner food was twenty-five, twenty-eight thousand, fifteen dollars that we needed to cover. The medical was thirty-six thousand, five sixty-two we needed to cover, and he was able to cover that within his budget and also due to the transfer from the sheriff's budget.
I just want to bring it up about the prisoner medical. This is during that budget year that you had somebody in the hospital quite a bit? Okay. There, there was at least one inmate that went to the hospital multiple times, stayed in ICU, and the county had to cover that. Sheriff notified me and I notified the court to let him know that that was gonna go over, so. Thank you for keeping us up to date on that, and just wanted to make sure everybody knew that that's what that's from. I will scan this in after court today and email this to every elected official and department head so that you have it, and like I said, it'll also be in the minutes of the court. Move to approve as presented.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to approve as presented, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seven, consider possibly authorize payment of compensatory, compensatory time to elected officials and personnel accrued prior to fiscal year twenty-two as submitted by the elected officials and department heads to human resources for payment pursuant to the discussion that we had during the special meeting on April fifth. This will require a budget transfer from oh-one-oh-four-oh-one-eight-hundred contingency general to cover the expenses in the general fund and from the Roden Bridge fund balance to each department as necessary to cover expenditures in the Roden Bridge departments. This list was sent to us last Thursday. It was audited by the auditor over the weekend, and some changes were made. Those changes are highlighted in an orange or peach color on here. The total amount for the general fund would be eighty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and sixty-three cents, and the total amount for all personnel in the Roden Bridge fund is nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-four cents. I want to make a note that there's five elected officials being paid for comp time on here, and the reason that is, is when they were elected, they were employees before they became elected. They were informed by previous human resources directors that that comp time would stay on the books, and that way, if they ever became an employee again, then they would have that comp time they could take. We found out from the Texas Association of Accountants that's not true. It should have been paid at the rate they were making at the time they were transferred from an employee to an elected official, and they advised us to pay that off as soon as possible, so. Actually, Melinda wanted me to bring it to court about three or four weeks ago. I asked for it to just included in this package here, and so that's why there are five elected officials included on here who would normally not get paid. They owed that money from previously.
Move to approve.
Second. That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Roberts to approve as presented. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cooper?
Judge, I'm for this. I will vote in favor of it, but I am against paying the elected officials. I don't agree with that.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Are there any elected officials here that want to say anything regarding that?
I'm one of them.
Oh, I'll tell you what, one thing we were supposed to say when we made that motion is that this would be paid on May the fifth, and we didn't say that.
We have a holiday on Friday, so if you come every week, it's audited and.
I even made myself a note to make sure that we say that. So, the motion by Commissioner Kirkendall is to pay it as presented in the May fifth payroll, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is that okay with you?
Yes, sir.
And the second is still made by Commissioner Roberts. Let's vote again. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The reason for May the fifth is that Friday's a holiday, time sheets are due Thursday, and then Mrs. McWilliams will be at a conference next week, and so she and the auditor have asked to please pay this on May the fifth so they have time to go through, and I guess I'm muted according to somebody. I've been muted for a while, but anyway, we're discussing item number seven regarding comp time, and the motion was made by Commissioner Kirkendall to pay it as presented on the May fifth payroll and seconded by Commissioner Roberts, and we voted on that. The reason it's being paid May the fifth is because of the holiday Friday, and the treasurer will be at a conference next week. They need time to get all this situated and make sure there's no mistakes, so we're agreeing to pay that on May the fifth. Ms. McWilliams, did you want to say something?
As far as the comp time that's on the books, I'm one of the people that had comp time on the books.
Yes, ma'am.
And when Melinda brought it up to me, I asked her, did I have to be paid? Can I sign off, waive being, you know, it's not enough time to worry about. I haven't worried about it all these years, and she told me nothing. I can't opt out of being paid for it, so.
Just so you know, she went back to TAC to get advice on that, also went to the county attorney. Both of them said it has to be paid. If you wanted to donate it back, you can. I don't think you should, but you certainly can if you want to, but it has to be paid out by law. So we're just following what the labor law says.
So that's, you know, we're, we're in that trap. We didn't ask to be paid.
I think that total amount is around six hundred dollars, is that right? It's under six hundred dollars for the total amount for all five of them.
I think it was thirty dollars, you know, so.
I agree with Commissioner Cooper, and I don't, I don't imagine that any five of those elected officials, and Alvin's one of them, if he wants to say something or all that worried about this, but somebody tells you you're breaking the law, we try to fix it, and this is the way to fix it.
You might be able to donate it to the Christmas fund.
If that, if that could be donated, I left eight hundred hours of sick leave on the books when I came, and in fact, we looked into it, Melinda wasn't here, but I looked into donating to employees that actually need it, and they said we couldn't, so. I don't know what the difference would be on, in that, but anyway.
I think TAC has told her we have to have a policy to do that, to, to, a sick pool, sick fund pool or something like that.
And the difference is, is because sick, vacation, personal days, all of that, that's a benefit of the county. The comp time is actually ours worked. So therefore, that's why the law is stating that we have to pay them for it.
Thank you, David. Item, is that, are we done with item seven? Item eight, consider possibly amend the personnel policy concerning compensatory time prohibiting the transfer of accrued comp time from one department to another as presented by Melinda Harrington, Human Resources Director. I read this at the last meeting. It says the same thing. It basically just says no transfer of comp time from one department to another.
Art, Sheriff, and Melinda, y'all still working on the other that we talked about? And I can't remember exactly how it was worded last time. Y'all was, y'all were still gonna look into it. Where, where we can't require someone to take it in, within a certain period of time, y'all, you was working on that aspect.
I think we're kind of at a standstill, but, but, yeah.
What about the idea, I know Commissioner Roberts was against it. What about the idea of requiring an employee to take their vacation before, I'm sorry, to take their comp time before they can take vacation then?
We just, we really haven't discussed it anymore after getting all of this together, but I mean, we can pick up that discussion again, make sure it's right.
Thank you.
All right, anything further?
Move to approve.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item nine, consider request by Alex Parker, flood claim administrator, to approve replaid of lots nine A one and ten A one of Crestwood Estates. W W D I S survey, extract number seven eighty-six. This is located in precinct three. Are you familiar with this?
Yes, sir. I move to approve.
Sir.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and your page is on my table to sign after court. Item ten, consider request by Sharon Whitley, Health Director, to approve memorandum of understanding between Harden County Health Services WHIC program and Region Five Education Service Center, Adult Education and Literacy, also called Region Five E S C A E L. This is an opportunity to increase the level of services for clients with multiple needs.
Similar.
That motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item eleven, consider request by Sharon Whitley, Health Director, to authorize the county judge to execute professional services contract between Harden County on behalf of Women Infant and Children's Division and Christina C. Fuentes for international board certified, uh, board certified lactation consultant services. I think we approved this contractor at the last meeting, and this is a, an agreement between us, and it has been reviewed by the county attorney.
Just will live.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twelve, consider request by Sharon Whitley, Health Director, for approval to add an additional administrative assistant position in the Health Services Department at a pay rate of seventeen dollars an hour to coincide with current administrative assistant job descriptions previously approved in Commissioners Court on May third, two thousand and twenty-one. This is a one-hundred percent grant funded, grant funded position. Ms. Whitley is out sick today. I can tell you she contacted me about this a few weeks ago. This is a person that's currently making fifteen an hour that she wants to move, I think, over to the Silsby location, and she would be an administrative assistant over there at seventeen dollars an hour. It's all paid by grant money.
Similar.
Did Joy make a motion?
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item thirteen, consider approval of request by Aaron Tucker, Emergency Management Coordinator, to create a new line item in the fiscal twenty-one budget. Fiscal year twenty-one budget, that item would be four oh-six, three-three-one, four oh-five, local match Beaver Brook Bridge. Then transfer three hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars from the R and B fund balance to this new line item to fund the county's local match and responsibility for the Bieber Brook Bridge replacement project. Total amount of this project is one million, five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred dollars, the federal share being one million, two forty-four, four thirteen, eighty, and the county's responsibility being three hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty cents.
Similar.
Second. That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I just wanted to remind the court that because of Senate Bill seven, we will receive about six point two-five percent of our cost share back. Um, so at the end of the project, we should receive a refund for pretty good bet.
Should be around ten percent of one point six million, right?
It's six point two-five percent of the cost share, so I think not, you have the numbers?
It'll be a little bit over eighty-six thousand.
Right.
Is our cost share?
No, that's the amount we get.
There's the amount we get back.
But we have to pay it out first before we can get it back.
And that will go in Roden Bridge contingency?
It'll go back into the fund balance, huh, for the next project.
Exactly.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item fourteen, consider approval of request by Aaron Tucker, Emergency Management Coordinator, to amend the fiscal year twenty-two general fund budget by creating a new line item, zero-one-zero-four-oh-one-two-seven-eight, local match hurricane safe room, and transfer five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars from oh-one-oh-four-oh-one-eight-hundred contingency general to this new line item to fund phase one of the hurricane safe room project.
Similar.
Sir.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion?
What is the phase one?
That was the design phase, design and engineering, and that was submitted to the state at the end of December, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item fifteen, consider possibly authorize the purchasing agent to solicit construction bids for Gorstor Road related to Harvey C D B G dash D R infrastructure project.
Similar.
Sir.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item sixteen, consider request by Missy Sims, purchasing agent, to authorize the county judge to execute administration professional services agreement with Trader and Associates Incorporated for grant administration related to FEMA DR four-four-eight-five COVID-nineteen pandemic. This is the H M G P projects that we'll talk about in a couple of line items down.
Similar.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. As I understand, this contract is still under review by the county attorney, so I won't sign it until it's actually approved by him and ready to go, if that's okay with the court. All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seventeen, consider request by Missy Sims, purchasing agent, to authorize the county judge to execute professional services agreement with Schaumburg and Polk Incorporated for engineering services related to D R four-four-eight-five H M G P.
Similar.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion?
Uh, yes.
Yes, sir.
So, with today's action, does that limit any other projects? I know that we just, I gave Aaron some ideas last week. So, will Schaumburg have the whole entire project for its duration, or will we have a say in who does it? Because I know a lot, for some of my projects, I've been very pleased with L J A, and I'd like to at least be able to consider them on some of our projects in precinct two.
The way I understand it, and the grant administrator's here, she can correct me if I'm wrong, but whoever selected as the grant, as the engineer and the grant administrator to submit the application, if we're awarded any, they're the engineer for the projects too. Is that right or wrong?
It is, but there is also the potential for, um, making a second award that would rescind the contract that's already been awarded. They would just add two engineers to cover the one program, and the county could potentially designate, you do this project, use this project, but it would have to be the next highest ranking engineer. You can't just arbitrarily say who it is. And I don't know who that is or isn't on this one, but you can't actually continue down the list if you feel it's warranted.
Isn't that the one with just if?
Yes, sir. I think we did warn number one, number two, and if I'm remembering correctly, L J was number two.
Okay, we may have to consider it later time, but I'd like at least the court to be open to using two. That's a lot of money. How much was it, five million? For the, for the A A, for the ARPA funds?
This is on the other project. This is the, this is the H M G P.
Oh, this H A. How much was that?
It, it, there isn't an amount yet at this time. We'll, we'll apply, and if we're awarded all the projects, it could be a substantial amount. Uh, if we're just awarded one or two, it just depends on what we apply for.
Okay, and if any, if any, if any precinct two gets awarded, I would like to at least consider Toby's group. I've been very pleased with their, with their work and their communication on their work.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item eighteen, discussion of possible action to authorize Trader and Associates Incorporated to submit grant applications for certain eligible projects utilizing the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program related to FEMA DR four-four-eight-five COVID-nineteen pandemic. And authorization for county judge to execute all related documentation as a certifying official. Possible eligible projects to apply for are as follows. We'll just take these one at a time. Eighteen A, procurement and installation of two emergency backup power generators at the Lumberton I S D Performing Arts Center, which a lot of people refer to as the dome there at the high school, and the multipurpose gymnasium at the rear of the L I S D high school complex for first responder stage before, during, and after disasters. If we could just get a consensus of the court if you would like to apply for that, and then we'll just take one motion at the end of all of it. Any discussion regarding item A? And, and let me just. And, and let me just add that, uh, during a disaster, we rely on, uh, the, uh, is it Porter Arthur? Has somebody from industry bring a portable generator up and hook it up at the dome? This was an issue the last time, I think, during Laura, when we had some staging going on there. Uh, whoever from industry normally handles that. It didn't happen when it was supposed to. It was kind of a fiasco. And for years, we have looked, looked, uh, for grants to do this and this is eligible in this grant project. So that's the reason to, to apply for this if y'all choose to do so. Yes, sir.
That's along the same lines of my question, uh, that you just put out there. Uh, is it specified on what first responder group states there? In other words, our people in Sealsby go to luck? Correct?
Uh, as far as the.
First responders. If, if they, if.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so Porter Arthur?
I mean, I don't know.
Porter Arthur, Beaumont stages at the dome.
That's an agreement between Lumberton I S D and the city of Lumberton, and that's where they come is to the dome, but I think, I think Lumberton P D and the fire department send people to the dome and who else, Aaron?
Yes, sir. So, uh, industry, uh, all the mid-county, uh, first responders go to the dome. Uh, last, last time we utilized the dome, we also had, uh, state assets staged there as well. Uh, search and rescue teams and, and stuff of that nature. Uh, the dome is also available for, for our first responders. Uh, just staying there for more than, you know, the couple hours that the event's going on.
I guess it would depend too, on in, in the past, in the recent past, we haven't had to evacuate, but they have.
Yes, sir.
So if, if it's mandatory evacuation here, our people would go somewhere else, but they do have the capability of staying there as well.
In fact, I would say they have first choice to go there if that's what they want to do.
Okay. Thank you.
And when, and if we ever build a safe room here, they'll also have the option to stay there if they'd like to. In fact, I would think,
All right.
And the sheriff may want to speak to that, but I would think they probably want to split them up, maybe send half to Lumberton and half to Coombs.
All right.
We would love to go there. We've never had that option.
Well, you should.
And that's, that's why I'm, I have been told that, and I didn't know how, uh, if there was any merit to it.
There, there is a little merit, Commissioner, and that, and that's been a little bone of contention with first responders in Harden County. Um, we, that was a Jefferson County, Mid-South County asset hub and state resources. Um, Harden County's first responders, with the exception of, uh, a little bit of stuff from the city of Lumberton, Lumberton Police, um, sheriff's office know, and as far as I'm concerned, as far as I know, the other cities know. Um, I don't know who makes that decision. That was a good question a while ago. I don't know if that truly is between the district and an agreement or an M O U that they have out there. Um, or if that was a contingency and requirement when they qualified for the funding on the front end of that. I, I have, as a taxpayer, I have an issue with, with putting a lot of funding from the county into something where we're not housing county resources, and so.
Question. So have they told you no?
Uh, they've not told me no, but we've received the full plan on who was to be positioned in there and we're not involved, nor is any other first responders involved in the full plan on where you're housed in there. In other words, it's a manifest and here's, here's where you're going to be housed and here's your square footage and here's your area. And that.
Who's in charge of that?
I would assume the district, but I'm not sure. I don't know.
Let me just add that last year, uh, or maybe the year before, but I think very recently, Aaron and I learned that, uh, cause they've always called me when it comes time to bring state wor- uh, resources in and what have you, and, uh, we learned that that M O U is actually between Lumberton I S D and the city of Lumberton, so we're out of that now. But we did commit to the school district and to the city that we would look for grants to, uh, put generators in there, cause another issue that happened last time is that the, uh, asset that came from industry, they didn't remove it in time. The school was trying to go back in session and they couldn't turn the ri- the regular power back on. It's just something we've talked about for years. Trying to put a generator on that building and the building behind it, which is where everybody sleeps after a storm, when they're not having to be inside a hardened facility. They go to that gym and that's where they sleep and eat and what have you, shower and all of that. Uh, that's the reason to ask for the second generator for that facility. But I can tell you this, when we met with the, uh, Dr. Tipton was the superintendent that we met with. Uh, Porter Arthur was there, Mid-County agencies were there, Chief Sullins was there. They all said that everybody from Harden County is welcome to come there during the, when the crap hits the fan part of it, and then after that, you get out and go stay somewhere else. So when there's a storm coming through and people need to go to a safe place, that place is supposed to be open for everybody. You might be in there like sardines for six or eight hours during the, during the, you know, the hardest hit part of the storm, but that place is located in Harden County. As far as I'm concerned, we have first option to go there.
Aaron, do you know if, and I think I asked this question before, but I don't remember. Uh, on this H M G P, uh, grant for the COVID pandemic, does the city of Lumberton or Lumberton I S D have the capability to apply for this grant like we do?
So the city does, the school does not.
Correct.
Schools are not eligible. The city would be able to. Yes, sir.
I'm not, I'm not knocking the judge for, for bringing this up, but I agree with the sheriff on this, that we're gonna, if there's any match, and there might not be, but.
There's ten percent. And our, our goal is to go to industry for that ten percent, or the school district, or the city. The county may have to put some money in, but around fifty thousand dollars is what we think the match will be.
I would like for someone to at least look into the fact of whether or not the, uh, opportunity is, is provided to our first responders to house there as well.
I agree. And if on the next mock-up, if they could give the sheriff some room. Or, uh, or else, uh, yeah, I'm, it's, it's just not good.
So the consensus of the court is not to go with item A?
No, I, I think we should.
I think we should.
I think we should.
I just think somebody should look into making sure that we do have that capability of, of our people going there.
Okay. I agree with that as well. So the consensus of the court is to go with item A?
Yes.
All right. Any more on item A? Next is eighteen B, a hydrology and drainage studies of the following waterways, Boggy Creek, Black Creek, and Mill Creek. So everybody agree with those?
And then Aaron on Black Creek, we're also talking about Black Creek on Work Road and Villa Road, right? Is that the one I talked to you about?
Yes, sir.
We have some issues there, so that's good.
All right. Consensus is to go, uh, to apply for that? Item B. Item C is residential elevations, twenty-five homes in flood pron- flood prone areas. The homeowners will be responsible for one hundred percent of the local match. Discussion regarding this? I'm going to defer to you as the former floodplain administrator. What is your thoughts on this? I, I'll tell you that I think it's a hassle for us and the grant administrators to work with people when they have to pay the match. I agree that taxpayer funds shouldn't pay the match. But ask the people to pay the match and to go through that is a hassle for our grant administrator, grant coordinator, and sometimes us here on the court. Now, what would you like to say regarding that?
Um, I agree with Adam. Ten percent is, I think, w- will this grant pay a hundred and sixty thousand dollars towards elevation?
Two hundred and five thousand.
It's even more, okay. So, um, I do feel like the county shouldn't do any more buyouts unless we have to. Um, this is the other option is to elevate the homes. It helps the homeowners with, um, their insurance rates. After Harvey, a lot of the insurance rates skyrocketed. Uh, people lost their mortgages because they couldn't afford the insurance. Uh, so it's, it's a problem. Um, I personally would like to see an elevation project. We haven't had one in the county ever. And we've applied for several. Um, I know a lot of people would benefit from this.
Do we have a lot of people asking for elevations? Does anybody know? Has anybody approached us for that?
I had some. I turned them over, especially going around the Lumberton area. We, we had some.
I had a list, uh, when I was in the floodplain office. Uh, there's people in Wildwood, Pinewood. It's all over, uh, the county, over in Sealsby area.
Would they be willing to come up with twenty thousand dollars to do that?
I think some of them could and some of them couldn't.
They would, they would be responsible for that.
Maybe my lack of knowledge in this area will show on this question, but wouldn't B cover some of that? Item B on this, wouldn't that a hydraulic, uh, drainage study cover some of that elevation stuff or not?
No, sir. Uh, this is where they actually take, take the actual home and elevate it.
Raise it.
So, um.
But in order to figure out whether you need to be raised or not, there would have to be some type of study. Am I correct or not?
No, sir. They just have to be below the base flood elevation. So FEMA already did a study to establish the base flood elevation in the flood zones. Uh, whenever they're below the base flood elevation, their insurance rates skyrocket and they're also more susceptible to flooding. We've taken, um, we've done away with a lot of the severe repetitive loss through buyouts. But it's just my opinion. I don't think that we should do buyouts anymore. Um, and this is the, the next option, is to elevate the homes that are still below the base flood elevation.
Uh, where did we come up with this twenty-five, the number?
I don't know. It's just a number I threw out.
Okay.
Figured we could find twenty-five residents that could afford to pay the match that wanted to elevate.
Twenty thousand dollars is really not a drop in the bucket when you're paying five thousand dollars a year just in flood insurance.
And since y'all have never had a program like this before, I feel like I should interject a few things.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, it is something that the county would pay, um, the contractor that does the elevation and then be reimbursed. So it is just like any other project. Um, we ask for the match commitment, the match share from the homeowner and at the time of the signing of the contract. It's a three-party contract between the county, the homeowner, and the contractor. Um, cost is not actually the required consideration for the selection of the contractor. Basically, the county would do a pre-qualified list. And then, uh, we usually take the contractors on a site visit, um, to all of the properties. Preferably, we would have elevation certificates, um, prior to ever taking the contractor on site. Um, of course, now we've got all the fabulous tools that T D O M and V M are rolling out with that will help us determine actual elevation right now. Um, but it would be elevated. We would have the opportunity and the, um, application to define whether or not homes are elevated to B F E or if there's any kind of free boarding, um, ordinance that we could say we need to raise to, or if there's even one anticipated, we could do that. And we could also use A S C E guidelines, um, I think it's A S C E twenty-four. Um, that based on the type of structure does require a free boarding of at least one foot for residential structures for like just one to four family homes. So there's a variety of things that, that do play into it besides just, um, you saying, hey, we're going to elevate these. We have been doing them. We're, um, awaiting some FEMA approvals to move forward with some in Orange County right now. Um, I know it is something that homeowners appreciate. Um, every time there's a storm, we have a lot of anxiety. Everyone's like, oh, going to flood again this time. And for areas that you legitimately cannot do anything with drainage, um, this is a great program. Um, and especially some of the people who live closer to water sources are very reluctant to leave their homes. I'm sure y'all ran into that with the buyout. Um, we've, we've given people that option and a lot of people don't want it. It's, they've been their home for years, but they also are tired of flooding. So, um, as Commissioner Yance stated, it's, it's a drop in the bucket compared to what you continually pay year after year, especially as we have more storms and these premiums continue to rise. Now, we will see some changes with the new risk management two point O that's going to be instituted, but, um, even just the peace of mind I found with a lot of homeowners has been worth it.
We do have some that actually pay twelve thousand dollars a year.
In your area over there, unless you just go specific to Pinewood, wouldn't there be more than twenty-five though that would qualify?
That would qualify, yes. Uh, I don't think there would be that many that we would need to do.
Need.
Um, there's a lot of them that didn't flood in a five hundred year storm, but they all flooded in Harvey. You can't really base anything off of Harvey. Um, but we do have some, especially in the Wildwood area around the lake and stuff that, uh, get close a lot. Um, so I think that there's enough that would be able to cover the match, um, to benefit us.
And we can continue to, um, develop more of a program for this as well instead of just saying, hey, twenty-five is what we're doing. We can also, um, prioritize, um, based on really anything that y'all wish to.
Like repetitive?
Repetitive. Um, you can limit to a property that's occupa- like owner occupied or tenant occupied versus someone having, you know, multiple rental properties that get in the program. We're running into that right now in Orange County. We have one homeowner that's getting three homes and there's people who didn't get their homes elevated, um, who didn't qualify, who are upset by the fact that this one person is getting three. We can name alternates. We can prioritize based on, you know, conditions right now. And by the time these get funded, frequently people have moved. It is the property that is considered, not the homeowner. Um, so there's still, you know, whoever purchases the house would have the option, but if they're not interested, we could have an alternate list where we continue down. Um, there's a lot of different ways to set this up and, I mean, that's, that's almost like a meeting in itself with someone to kind of visit um, about how we would want to stand it up if you do move forward. Um, but I, I can tell you from, from personal experience dealing with homeowners, it is something that, um, is appreciated. They know the amount of work that the county goes to, to get these done. Um, and a great relief once it's completed, so.
Let me ask you this, as far as, uh, line item number eighteen as a whole, whatever the court, uh, agrees to go for on these, um, however many it is here, would you prioritize how you apply for them or all as a whole, you'll apply for all of them?
I'll apply for all as a whole, but we will have an opportunity inside each application to state a priority level and or an, um, alternative project at either a lesser scope or lesser amount of, um, federal share to help prioritize projects. But I, I will be submitting everything that the county approves. Everything will go in at the same time.
I'm looking at, at most of these and pretty much agree with most of them, but I think i- if we prioritize something, B should be on top of the list. Because it's something we've been working on for a long time.
I agree.
I agree with that as well, yeah, absolutely.
What's the consensus on item C?
It's good.
Yeah.
It's good. All right. On item D, improvements of drainage ditch behind the Parkway Life Church utilizing A R P A funds for local match. I think this is self-explanatory. We've been talking about it. Anybody else want to discuss that, Alvin?
House is something that needs to be done.
The reason, the reason for us putting this on the list because we're applying for another grant for this as well, correct?
Correct. It's got, it should be totally paid for, right?
Yeah, we can pay for it a hundred percent with A R P A money, but it was a recommendation of the grant administrator to apply for this grant and match it with A R P money, opening up those funds to do some other drainage improvement or something. Is that right?
That, that is correct. And I should add too, that when we're discussing all of these right now, I mean, these are eligible projects. Um, that does not mean that when we get into the application process that we can make them meet the B C A. We won't actually know that these are viable applications until we do all of the research, um, verify all of the damages, things like that to make sure that they are fundable. Um, so that's why it's even better to have the, the list to start off with. Um, but the Parkway Life Ditch in particular, I'm just thinking, it's something y'all are doing anyway. If someone else is willing to pay for part of it, you have money, you can still use art funds to match and let someone else pay for it and use those funds for something else that's also needed at the county.
Do you see any, uh, chance of us not getting it on the A A? A R P A, or has it already been approved?
I think that's pretty much in the, in the pipe. It's.
Yeah, that's money we have and it's, it's an eligible project. Uh, item E, drainage improvements on Holland Road are located in precinct two. Any discussion regarding that, Commissioner?
There's a couple places on Holland Road that become impassable. Part of that water's draining from Amanda's, through Amanda's precinct. Comes across nine forty-three and it floods on, uh, that end. And then, uh, they have a couple of, of huge culverts on the other end that we could probably replace and build up that road. Uh, all the residents get locked in on a terrible rain from both ends, and so that's why I included, when Aaron and I talked, that's why I included that.
Everybody agree on that? As a yes. Item F, road construction continuation and drainage improvements on Gore Store Road in precinct two.
On that one, Judge, uh, the grant that we're working on now that we went out for bid on, uh, everything but about two miles will be completed on Gore Store. So if there's money available, these other projects don't need it up. I thought, uh, it would benefit the county to absolutely complete that road with the drainage and what have you. Aaron and I talked about it. And that would give you, uh, adequate drainage on Gore Store from ninety-two all the way to sixty-nine. Uh, during Harvey, it became the only route for a while that was open to kids.
Does that include them a search still out there or not?
Yes, and Angela and I talked about that today. We're coming up where, uh, that sea turf will fall off.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does everybody agree on item F? Item G, installation of a new helipad for Village Mills E S D eight.
That is something I talked to, uh, That is something I talked to, uh, their E S D board about. There's challenges now, uh, with the, uh, with things being behind the gate, uh, for first responders to respond to. E S D is willing to, uh, take ownership of some property outside the gate that would benefit all of the residents in Village Mills north of, of, uh, Coontz, that area. They've had several, uh, several wrecks, several needs for a helicopter to land up there. And it would just put it more in the public's care and the E S D, uh, is willing to go with it. So I talked with Shanna at, uh, Regional Planning. So we're just trying to pull from, uh, all different kind of ways to try to help them get that helipad in a place where ambulances and stretchers can navigate. Cause right now, they can't navigate that helipad they have. And so-
Where is it at now?
Uh-
By the fire station?
No, it's, it's, it's right up by the gate, but it's on the property owner association property.
Alright. What's consensus on item G?
And Aaron said he didn't even know if this would be eligible, but he thought that we might wanna throw it in there just to see if they could or not.
Yeah, they may, T D M may say this is a, a response, uh, instead of a mitigation, uh, action. And if they say it's a response, then it's, it's not eligible.
Yeah.
Everybody's a yes on that? Is that right? Item H, storm hardening of the Hardin County courthouse, including removal of the tower from the courthouse rooftop. This is something that Aaron has been talking with, uh, others about over the years. The Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission installed a tower next to the courthouse, I think about five or six years ago. The plans are to move any antennas that are in use on the tower on the rooftop over to that one and then take that tower down. We've looked at different options of doing that in the past. Uh, we've also asked, uh, Pete with the Planning Commission to help us with funds with that. He's committed to doing so, but each year there are no monies available to do it. But, uh, this was one, uh, one avenue of funding that we looked at for doing that and, uh, that's why it's on the list. What other storm hardening would be done on the courthouse besides removing the tower? Which is a liability to the building?
So it, it would really depend on what the engineers and, and architects look at. Uh-
Replacing the windows?
From replacing the windows or maybe, uh, storm shutters that, that can close on, on, all interest and exits and then just, uh, just stuff like that. Maybe some roof upgrades to, uh, make sure that the roof is, is capable of withstanding strong windstorms and, or rain events, just stuff like that.
Yes, ma'am.
How, how old is the courthouse?
Nineteen fifty-four, I believe. Is that right? Anybody know? Most of it's nineteen fifty-four, fifty-six. And then there's a, a, some of it that was, uh, added on, I think in nineteen eighty or eighty-one.
Okay. So is it considered historical?
No. It's not, it's not a designated historical building.
I know, but it'll be by, it'll be by, um, T H C since it's over forty-five years.
Okay.
Um, so there's a chance that we'll run into some issues on, um, what they'll allow. Um, but honestly, it's not, I don't think there's anything that's got like historical characters to it in the windows or anything. Is there just on anything that's-
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, after this meeting, when certain people view it online, it will be. I, I assure you that.
Except for the love of green panels. Those are pretty historic.
Yeah. What's the consensus on item H?
Yes.
Alright. Item I, construction of a storm hardened facility to house a mobile command center, including the Ford F five fifty truck that towed the command trailer. We've talked about this a few times. I know that, uh, Ms. Jones has attempted to obtain, uh, funding. Uh, that didn't work, so, uh, this was another avenue to look at for funding to, uh, build that facility. Everybody agree with that?
Yep.
Any questions or discussion on that?
I agree with it, but what, what location or have y'all even talked about?
Yeah, it would be over next to the floodplain office, behind the floodplain office over there on that property, next to the employee parking lot. That's where we've looked at doing it. So it sounds like the, uh, court is, uh, generally inconsistent, inconsistent, consensus for all of those items, A through, uh, is that correct? If so, I'll entertain a motion. So, man?
Say it.
Have motion back to Mr. Cooper, say it back to Mr. Roberts. And I think the deadline's been extended.
Yeah, I believe.
But let's, uh, let's don't go all the way to the end. When, when you're ready, if you would just come back and let's present it.
That'd be great. We have a self-imposed deadline in our office. Everything indoor by June tenth is the greatest.
Okay.
I would prefer, uh, we all want to take vacations when I y'all do too.
What's that?
By, uh, Memorial Day is kind of level. So if y'all want to see me back here just a few weeks, hopefully.
Sounds good. And I think all, if, if the court agrees with this, we would just want to know any that didn't qualify. And, uh, as applications are submitted, we'd just like to keep the court updated. Alright. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item nineteen, discussion only of any item not on the agenda without taking any action by any county official. Anybody in the audience? Sheriff, come on up.
Judge, two things real quick. One, um, in light of the, the actions on the comp time earlier, if you would, some discussion maybe or for a later meeting, uh, as some guidance to, to me on what your thoughts are on moving forward with overtime compensation, be it comp time or be it paid. Um, we're, we're limited on what we have in our budget currently right now. And we're, we're getting to a point where at some point we, we run out of funding. Unfortunately, my overtime doesn't stop. Uh, we still have those needs for people to come in in the jail throughout the rest of this budget year. Um, for, to be able to help me help you all, what's your take? Where, where, where do you envision? Where do you want to go? Are you trying to work to, to, to a direction of, of doing away with comp time and having everything paid? Are you, are you not? Um, those are the questions that, that are gonna come up. Uh, you know, these, these time sheets and pay that's coming up over the next weeks and months, we still have people that are working overtime. So are you wanting the department heads and elected officials to try to move away from any comp time and go to, to monies? And if so, then obviously that's gonna affect us on where we are in our budget right now. We hadn't planned for that. Um, I think there could be an argument made on either side, whatever pleases the court, but, uh, and I don't need an answer today. But, but if y'all could at least begin some discussion or think of that and be able to give some direction to me, um, I'm probably the lion's share of what's going on as far as the, the, the overtime needs. And it's more especially in the jail. Um, but we, you know, we're still months away from the end of the budget here. So if there's more overtime to come, how would you like to see us, uh, compensate that in time? And then it puts us right back under the eight ball again in six to eight, ten months of high comp time balances. Or do you want us to try to move towards paying that? Um, anyway, uh, just, uh, good. I don't need an answer today, but if you, maybe start some, some thought process and discussion to give me some direction on where you'd like to see us go to compensate the employees. The other thing, uh, just a reminder, this is National Telecommunicators Week. Uh, we show some appreciation and recognition to all our dispatchers that work in the sheriff's office. I know some of the departments, uh, have interaction with them more than others. If you have an opportunity this week to say hi or thank you or a kind word, I'm sure they'd appreciate it. Um, they have a very tough job and it's very stressful and any recognition or a pat on the back goes a long way. So, thank y'all.
Anybody want to address the comp time?
Yes, sir. Going back to that, uh, Sheriff, I think, like in the last meeting, uh, I think we pretty much can control it in every department beside yours. That's just my personal opinion. Maybe we can. I think we can. Uh, on yours, I think when it comes budget timing, like you said, we're just halfway through this budget. But when it comes budget time, we're gonna have to, uh, take all that consideration. And one thing we need to look at is what we just did today with the, uh, uh, budget amendments that we made and look at the line items where we had to transfer money, which we do every year. Uh, and see if we can't, uh, maybe make somewhere in the middle. I don't think the county can afford to do away with comp time and pay because we don't have the money to do that. But maybe we can give you additional personnel in the jail and put you a little bit more money in the overtime budget or whatever, but-
I just didn't want, I didn't want y'all to be surprised if you started seeing some, some comp time come in and go, well, we just paid for comp time. That was our goal, was to try to get it off the books. And here you are having employees come in for more. So, um, again, I'm, I'm flexible. I'll do whichever way the court wants to go. Just put a bug in my ear in the direction that you'd like to go.
The way I see it, all we addressed today was comp time that was accrued prior to October first. We tried to-
Yeah.
Get that taken care of and then ask everybody to try to get everybody who still has comp time on the books to take it before the end of this budget year. I, I would say we'll revisit this again in September, maybe August, August, September, we'll revisit this to see who still has a lot of time on the books and see what we want to do about it before the end of this budget year. But as far as the policy change on comp time, as I said before, it's kind of hard to paint everybody with the same brush. I can tell you what I do. The only one that really ever gets any comp time in my office is Alicia because we, we've worked through much a lot of times in court. She's here until five thirty or six sometimes. And I just asked her on Friday, how much time do I owe you to take it off? Let's get you out of here and get it off the books. But everybody can't do that. So, uh, everybody who can, I think you should. Everybody's elected officials. Y'all don't work for any of us up here. Y'all work for the citizens just like we do. I just ask you to manage it the best you can. Again, I agree with Commissioner Cooper. The sheriff has a harder time doing that. He's mandated how many people have to work in the jail, depending on how many people's in custody. I want to add that the sheriff brings money in by having inmates that don't live in Hardin County or don't, aren't incarcerated in Hardin County with contracts he has with, uh, Liberty Chambers and some others. So that helps offset, uh, some of it, but, uh, certainly not all of it. But we do appreciate you doing that.
Well, we have a problem once, uh, inmates are sentenced, getting them picked up by T D C. I mean, is that contributing to the issue? Yeah, that's statewide. It, it is. There is a big backlog and there continues to be a backlog. I don't know if there's a quick answer to that. Um, what's that?
It's about a year.
Yeah, it, it, uh, when, when they're ready, then there's some, just because they're sentenced today, there's some stuff that has to involve locally of getting paperwork and pen pack ready and the district clerk's offices is involved in that very heavily. You know, so we try to speed that up. Um, but then we're at the mercy of when they tell us we can bring prisoners. We take them to Beaumont. Uh, they catch T D C's chain bus there. So that saves us a trip to some of the units. Uh, unless they came to us straight from a unit. If they were brought back here, then we've got to take them back to the unit. But we don't get to send everybody that we have quote paper ready. Uh, we're allotted X number of spots. And, uh, there was a point here about thirty days ago where I had over forty ready to go, sitting in the county jail, ready to go to T D C, uh, waiting on, you know, a few pieces of paperwork here, but they were sentenced, uh, by March. You could echo that in every other county across the state. Uh, every sheriff is, is jumping up and down saying they're ready, T D C come take them. Unfortunately, T D C's in the same boat we're in. They don't have enough room. They don't have enough beds. They have to, uh, throttle that intake down because they, they, there's no way they could take all of them in one week. Um, we do the best we can with what we've got to work with. The, the problem is getting a little better over the last couple of years. Where we still are in a bind is on our forensic beds or our beds for mental health issues. Where we have a person who is not competent to stand trial. They've been ordered to, uh, facility, um, until they're deemed competent to come back and stand trial. That's where our biggest problem is. Um, having those in the jail, they are the worst of the worst when it comes to behavior. And that's, uh, we have three right now that we're waiting and, and it's horrible, horrible, horrible. Uh, you're housing them and you're trying to provide for their well-being and services. And, and that's where we're really hoping the legislature gives us. Uh, they've opened up some more beds and there is a facility out of Houston that's just come up online that's helped a little. That's where the sheriff's lobbying efforts are this next session, is more forensic beds. To, to open up those very unique prisoners in county jails that can't go to a T D C facility. They have to go someplace, uh, that's, that's deemed appropriate.
So on the ones that we're holding, is there any way we can bill for that? T D C? Cause it becomes an unfunded mandate.
Yes, sir. You're, you're correct. The general answer is no. There's some things along the way that we can do and some stuff we can help mitigate it, but the generalized answer is no.
Right.
So we, we work with what we can and, uh, housing inmates when we have that opportunity is a way to offset some of that cost. Um, that extra revenue helps for those that are stuck here and waiting on a bed and, and you're not gonna get rich doing that because we don't have enough beds from time to time available. If we could routinely house sixty, eighty prisoners a month, uh, throughout the year, that's a really good source of income. Um, we don't have that. There's some times that, you know, our, our prisoners get first choice on beds, obviously. So when we, when we're down in that one twenty, one thirty range, we can house them. We can put the word out and say, hey, I've got some extra beds. And trust me, they will be here the very next day with them. They're in such a bind. But there's times where we have a hundred and seventy, a hundred and eighty of our own. There's just no place to-
Yeah. And what's your capacity?
One ninety-six. So we're, uh, we were one thirty, one forty in the last week or two, which is a godsend. We haven't been that low in a long time.
Right.
And so we're all trying to catch our breath. But, uh, thank you for your consideration again. That just, just giving me some direction on what you want to do, uh, on the comp helps, helps know how to get my employees and my managers on board of what we're gonna have.
I expect we'll just revisit this again in the August, September timeframe. It gives everybody a chance to think on what we might want to do as far as a comp time policy and, uh, and then how to, how to, um, handle any that's still left on the books at the end of this budget year.
Well, going back to what I was saying with comp time, and, and, and this is how I see it. I think it's a staffing problem. I think we need more staff in the jail. If you're having to, if you're having to tell somebody to take the comp time, then you're having to bring somebody else in to make more comp time. It's a, it's a catch twenty-two. You just, you're gonna just keep that rolling.
And you're, you're upside down when you do that because they're often, you're paying them at their hourly rate, but now you're paying time and a half for somebody to come in and cover the shift.
Exactly.
So how do you, you can't ever head that-
It's just a bad, bad machine. Just keep rolling.
But thank y'all for everything you've done and consideration. Uh, we appreciate it.
I just want to say the sheriff mentioned something about lobbying and I know, uh, Maze Middleton is very against, uh, counties paying for lobbying. We don't pay for lobbying. And so if he ever watches this, I want to make sure he knows Hardin County's not paying any money to lobby anybody. That's something the sheriff does himself and the other sheriffs across the state. Just wanted to throw that out there. Any other, uh, officials want to say anything in the audience or at the bench?
Weather update, for the season.
Uh, I didn't read it. I just forwarded it to y'all. But I forwarded y'all the weather update. Did you read it?
I did not.
Does it say we may have some bad weather?
Hopefully clear and stale.
His name is the last one.
Clear and stale.
Right.
Clear up to your knees and still rising.
That's not what he usually says. Uh, I think there's a chance to get some bad weather, but I didn't, I didn't read it. Sorry. Tupper?
Yes, sir. So this afternoon, uh, again, some severe, possible severe thunderstorms, uh, with chance of, uh, tornadoes, hail and high damaging winds. And it's gonna play out again the same way tomorrow afternoon.
Yeah. Is it a, uh, lesser risk than last week or the same, or did you notice?
It's a, it's a lesser risk than last week was, yes, sir.
Ah, yeah. Sounds good. That's usually what we get when it's a lesser risk.
I still have PTSD.
Anybody else? If not, we'll move on to item twenty.
Move to there.
Have motion back to Mr. Kirkendall, say it back to Mr. Cooper to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Everybody have a happy Easter.